...seven percent after five years unlikely to rise. This week in California, the state's governor signed the FAST Act. It seeks to set a new wage of over twenty-two thousand an hour for fast
Good time, I was explaining.
Also with automatic annual wage increase about three point five percent. In New York City, our FDNY employees survive on a high wages of eighteen dollars an hour. Could you afford to live on that wage without having a second or third job? Could you afford to have children? Being a member of FDNY, this is
Can you wrap up? Thank you. Whenever you can.
First, the job. With every single now or possible life is underlined and responsible by too many emergencies every year. I ask you, why would someone stay on the job semi-percentage of our employees and paramedics run away quickly from the A and C in just the first five years and that's before congestion pricing mixed in? It involves a lot of
So can you wrap up? Thank you.
I have a long testimony, so if you have any questions, I would like to also answer some comments that remain on the other on the panel, if that's affordable to me.
Okay, so just we have about fifty people to speak, so if we're not hearing you, but we have a lot to go, so we can read, we will read every word of your testimony.
Okay, I should say that they were saying before that the attrition rate in New York City is eight percent, for EMS it's over twenty percent. Yeah, EMS and inspectors are not really the same as they talk about the uniform, promotions and employment. There are so many hours with my testimony.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, we'll hear from Saul Fishman, followed by Adana Shadme, and then Michael Carratzas.
Good time, I'm here. Good afternoon. I'm, uh, I have my microphone here. We're here. Okay, I'm from originally from the Southern Service Bar Association. We represent a few charities and virtually every city agency. I'm here to testify about our legal divisions, having great division staff and dedicated employees impacting around pride. Leaving city unemployment and how policies of the city have unrealistic made our bigger situations worse every day. There's no way I can save in the experience of people before the agencies in two minutes, but there's it's horrible, it's getting worse. We had thousand fifty-seven members as of right as the and that started, we're now down to eight hundred thirty-one members, so we've lost two hundred twenty-six hard work attorneys, twenty-two seven of our attorneys. I have a mail from an attorney at the tax office, which which really well illustrates you know, how it's become untenable and how this situation is badly affecting the public? How the delays are causing people not to get prime hearings, not to get all kinds of things, how the delays how how it's basically untenable to the public as well as the staff and why they're continuing to expect them to continue those people? And this is this is used to TLC and ACS, we've lost, sorry, we have two hundred forty-six people, down to one hundred seventy-seven, a drop of about twenty-eight percent. These are people who protect the text, prevent the text, Bigsbury Brown, I'm a brother situation at the HHS of all guardians at Human Rights Commission, where we went from twenty-five down to fifteen, the loss of approximately forty-seven still personnel is not worth it, discrimination applied at block buildings. They've seen approximately forty percent reduction in their ranks. Now I have some specific suggestions in terms of how to approach this, which I'd like to briefly get to.
Can you wrap up? Sorry, can you wrap up as soon as possible? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to suggest that of course, plus this criticized delays from our onboarding assistant, each agency showed their attempts at recruiting that given the difficulty of recruiting, our title should be exempted from the residency requirements. And some commissions are virtually all are afraid to take that necessary step. Should also event the administration, I think, administration code, not only the difficulty to recruit, but also difficulty retaining talent. There are so many important things, and by the way, doesn't make any sense that the interns by corporation council are deemed are exempt because they're difficult, allegedly difficult to recruit, but not us interns who went to the same hospitals or whatever. So there's a lot of arguments.
You need to wrap up. We'll read your testimony. You can wrap up. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and finally, we need some legislation in part of each agency to prepare our policy for employees' ability to work alone and should follow that up with demanding each commission to come in and adjudicate five people who are included, excluded from such a task.
Thank you.
Our show.
Next, we'll hear from Adana Shadme and then Michael Carratzas.
Good time, I'm here.
Good afternoon. I'm Anna Chacrini, the vice president for research and citizens' budget commission. You've got the opportunity to testify. As we heard, there are well over twenty thousand vacant positions. First, I want to say the city can and should reach the number of offered vacant positions without exceeding its ability to provide high-quality position services. But it should also strategically fill the vacant positions in agency units that are currently unable to deliver the volume and quality of service that new owners rightly expect. And these current challenges are the result of management procedural labor market challenges that the city should address. We apply specific recommendations by submit longer written testimonies, so this will be a bridge version. First, current policies and procedures are inflexible and cumbersome and are facilitating controlled hiring and serving delivery service delivery. Move available positions to where they are needed and we can fully reallocation. Agencies should be budgeted smartly efficiently and well hired to bill vacant positions. The two-for-one hiring rate is not appropriate at this time. Many offices are involved in multiple steps in the hiring process and including posting positions, making offers and setting start dates. Speeding up the process, ensuring adequate time and civil service tests and lists is especially important in the current competitive market. The city should provide training, upskilling and advancement opportunities to acknowledge and retain high performers. Given the tight labor market, providing more skills training and negotiating flexibility in multiple changes could actually increase the effectiveness of public service. A longer-term solution would need to consider what changes and improvements of public sector employment and civil services that are needed for it to be attractive, retain and integration, talented, hardworking and innovative public servants. And then report transparently on making these hires separations and promotions. The city's hiring processes are sort of a black box, shedding light on the lack of quality of this process will be useful to assess
Good time, I was explaining.
effective. The city's processes are and allow policy makers to publicly identify all of them. And thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you submit your testimony because it's a little hard to hear from the, uh, the sound. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I did.
Thank you.
Well, now we'll hear from Michael Carratzas. After Michael, we'll hear from John Matlin, and then James Hoag, George, and George Gutierrez, and Mary Ann Pizzatola.
Good afternoon, good evening. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. I'm a nineteen-year employee of Landmarks Preservation Commission, appearing before you as president of chapter forty-one, law of three seventy-five, B C thirty-seven, representing thirty-four employees of the commission and Landmarks Preservation, a firm of archaeologists and research scientists and our members, nearly all of whom have master's degrees or doctorates. Doing the day-to-day work of the commission, reviewing work applications, working on historic destinations. Really all the day-to-day work of the commission is, is, is most of it is done by members. I did, I realize that my time is short. I did submit written testimonies, so I hope you will look at that, which goes into room for detail. But the one point I'd like to make is this, while the pandemic and the great resignation may have exacerbated the staffing crisis, they did not cause them. The causes go back twenty years. Over the past twenty years, our pay, our salary, our compensation has declined relative to inflation about twelve percent. So a higher rate now is fifty-six thousand. If it were aligned with inflation, it would be sixty-four percent. So salaries are way down. It's hard to hire and retain people. And there is no quick and easy solution to this. It's not adding more job waivers. It's not going to high schools to recruit. It's you just have to pay people more in line with private sector and, you know, what they need to live in this city. Something that wasn't mentioned, I didn't hear mentioned, was the shift from tier four to tier six. When I started with the commission in two thousand and three, I started in tier four. And it was a major benefit, and we hope that the city that will actively look to raise salaries of world tier six to bring it in line with tier four and encourage and allow for permanent employment for
Thank you very much.
I'd now like to welcome from John Matlin, James Hoag, George Gutierrez. That was John Matlin, James Hoag, George Gutierrez, and Mary Ann Pizzatola.
Do you copy me? Oh, everybody, thank you for having us. I have to say, I wish Jen stopped these things so we could circle back on some of those things. But sadly, I have some people which in next year because I have a lot of people here that are still unemployed. And I, as a healthcare worker, used to go into rooms before we had data that proved that ninety-nine percent of the people that did this survive. Before we had data that knows how life spread, but I taught my N ninety-five, my one issue N ninety-five, and I was prepared because it's peanut butter, never sent this. And I went into these rooms, people with bilateral chest tubes, aerosol eyes freshly vented, moving them onto my cat's hand table. And then my religious exemption was denied, and after eighteen years in the healthcare field, I had to run for U S Congress. And I ended up probably being on the city council on about two years, so nice to meet you guys. But what we have here is a lot of unemployed people. And what's the retention? You heard about a nice land use. The first retention scheme would be try to get people thrown in front of trains on the way to work. Also have affordable housing, meaning you could raise wages, or we can stop taking everybody's salary and garnishing it every time they drive five miles over the speed limit, ten miles over the speed limit in a school zone at two o'clock in the morning. There's a lot of different things that we find. We're overtaxed, we're overburdened, and a lot of us are only here because we can't help but fight. I will not stop fighting. I'll move to Florida after I learn to fight. How about that? But I ain't moving before that. We have a lot of tyranny going on. It says right up here, don't remove the people by the people for the people. And if you're gonna fight, the people are set with what's on. I, you know, I leave a clock that's because unlike everyone else, ten seconds, I'll leave a better clock. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peter Gutierrez. I worked on some of those as a custodian for twenty-one years. Last year was a night of exemption, and the exemptions are, the mandates, exemptions are arbitrary, but they don't have a reason. People wouldn't have this for the same exemptions I did, got them. I'm out of a job twenty-one years. People at my church, there were people that had consensions, people that sort of were on the board, just like two teachers, twenty-plus years, a medical nurse, eighteen years, that's eighty-plus years of experience. Just out of fear, they had no signs behind them. If we'd like to close the gap that we have, we have this vacancy gap in the city that we've been talking about all day today. If you'd like to close that, as Mr. Paul Dean, Mr. Holden, Joanne, and some of the other councilmen have been pointing out. It was a countdown, but it's follow signs that hasn't been followed. And I would appreciate, you know, both council people looking into that, discussing with the mayor. And we're hoping to have our jobs back soon because there's no reason for it to come, it's completely arbitrary. And we can close that gap on vacancies, so I'll maybe give it forty seconds. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Why, please, we can hear the speakers.
I'm a proud New York City school teacher, twenty-eight years, twenty-plus years, who worked through the entirety of the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. Five days a week, teaching five classes online and recording to school once a week for professional duties, once school opened. For half of that time, there was no vaccine and all treatment options were callously slepticide. I didn't have to ask for any time off. Over the last year, I got an opportunity to relive some history and see what being involved in a civil rights movement might be like. If only I could turn a fastball or a dunk a basketball, I might have a chance to turn back to work in this city. Since I didn't wish to consent to participate in a vaccine experiment, I and my brothers and sisters of the movement lost our jobs, lost our freedom in many respects, lost the right to go in stores, were called disgusting names and compelled to wear these disgusting masks that graciously have, you know, have a who are subject to quarantines. This is all done without any studies or experiments to validate it. Now, there is a lot of talk about boosters and monkeypox vaccines using the same mRNA delivery system as the COVID vaccines, which we now know doesn't stain your arm, which we now know travels and settles spike protein in individuals' vital organs, which we now know does not prevent you from getting the virus or prevent the transmission of it. Shouldn't the vaccines, shouldn't the mandates at least be bought until you can find out what was happening to all the young people who are getting heart issues, neurological problems, and blood clots at extremely alarming rates?
Do we have Mary Ann Pizzatola?
Good afternoon, Chair for Councilman, Chair for, um, Chair of the LRS, and a member of the Civil Service and Labor and of Oversight and Testification Committees. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today on maintaining the city's municipal workforce. My name is Mary Ann Pizzatola. I am retired from New York City EMS FDNY. I am the president of FDNY EMS Retirement, and I am also the president of the N Y C Organization of Public Service Retirees, the group that sued the city successfully to stop the city from forcing us into Medicare coverage or charging us a penalty premium to stay in our current products. Workers join city service for many reasons: service, community, love of work we do, the excitement and joy of having an impact on someone's life, the lights inside like I do, or the benefits that we would be entitled to if we stay until retirement. We retirees count on the promise of us that we would collect a pension and receive health insurance. No city worker said, I'm joining the city, now I'm going to stay there for my career because the salaries amazingly high. The salaries were not high compared to our progress after Calendars, but job security and benefits attracted us, and we stayed. Just yesterday, the Municipal Labor Committee voted to support a change in the administrative code twelve thousand one two six that would permit them and the city to change the statutory path of city health insurance coverage for any class of individual face-on shoes. The N Y C in the city tried to force retirees into Medicare coverage last year, and our laws to stop them become a plan by way of the law. That's the same law that city council enacted in nineteen sixty-seven. These health benefits were promised to us and to current city employees. We earned them, and we pay them. If you permit this amendment to be introduced and adopted, your ability to attract and retain workers will become even harder. Why would anyone join city government to dedicate their lives to work for the city, with their hearts or their health in some cases, just to have inferior healthcare or a decision employment, or have what they have already earned and held, yet gotten stripped away from when they retire?
Thank you. You can wrap up. Thank you.
It will be difficult to attract and retain people when we fear what they were working towards have been taken away. Sitting in this very council chamber, former council members Mario Marola, Edmond Battle, Mary Cupid, Eileen Ryan, Miriam Friedlander, and beautiful old detective retirees. I think if they were all here today, they would agree with me that the best way to attract and retain a loyal workforce is to keep the promises paid to employees and retirees. I might also add that the city should not put in unions against one another and making them give up the benefits promised to their retirees. I'd say in short, keep your promises. You will find that people who work, want to work for the city because it gives the greatest city in the world. But if the city workforce sees that they are risking what they earned, they will take their experience they gained in city employment and work somewhere else.
Thank you very much.
And now I hear from four Zoom panelists, Brenda Walker, followed by Stephen Boboski, and then Michael Nugent, followed by Nicholas Sherman. Brenda Walker, if you can get one ready.
Good time.
To the chair and the panelists. My name is Brenda Walker, speaking in honor of the twenty-two point nine year, year of H R A chap, sorry, chapter chair of H R A and grievance representative for the State Administration of the Northern Division. So we are experiencing this great resignation and now hearing that the vacancy rates have risen to ninety percent in social services to the agency that I represent. My members are minorities and predominantly women of color, mothers, and some of which are homeless themselves. They are, they've been on the front lines providing microservices to the public and have worked the mandated retirement. They did not get essential pay or heroes pay, not in the minute. So pressure coming from the top, members resigning quickly due to low salaries, lack of affordable housing, and the cost of living out of control. They get blamed for not producing while experiencing a breakdown in assistance equipment that don't properly work. They get maltreated, bullying behavior, and these are toxic environments that they're working in, disparate treatment. They're experiencing mental fatigue, stress, and, you know, it's a self-killer attitude, getting salaries too low, the harmful pension, and all these other things that I'm hearing from my other, other people that have been testifying. We have, we have an eligibility specialist list that had been in existence for ten years. The list aren't only supposed to be for four or five years, so I don't understand how that has happened. They get DCAST. So we have members that have waited to be hired, so during, throughout that time, of course, they have gone to other, other jobs. We are lacking a pair of social skills and eligibility specialists that need to be hired right now. These are the people that have broken the front line and snapped and medicated, hassled, informed, servicing the public. So we cannot continue to work like this. The pressure is coming from the top. It is, it is hard for our workers to continue to do the work more than less. We cannot go back to those times. They have not worked then, they have not worked now. They are pitting hardly into these positions. They are not getting their promotions that they have promised. Being on the list, something has to happen to change. Yes, more hiring has to happen right now. I understand this is, this is the sanctuary of the city, but they are now being forced to to service people that are coming from these other communities while our natives have been waiting for years and years and years and dealing with this own, this crisis and all these other crises.
Thank you very much.
And I think, thank you, just ask you that you take into consideration this and please hire workers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to hear from Stephen Boboski, and then Michael Nugent, and Nicholas Sherman. Stephen Boboski, you may get one ready.
Good time, I'm here.
Thank you. I would refer, thank you, council, for taking your testimony. I will refer you to my written testimony for more detail. But in brief, I always like to say, I think it is absolutely hilarious that anyone from DCAST or you would use words like expedition or quick in anything those agencies do, if it wasn't any city employee, they will tell you those steps are the longest ones in the hiring process. I'd also like to mention that our ability to remote work or not remote work is a serious threat to our ability to retain staff, especially amongst our technical workers, our IT forces and lawyers and other skilled professionals. They can more easily get higher-paying jobs in the private sector than they can work remotely. Being able to work remotely is a tremendous increase to the quality of life, and it is a tremendous capability issue as well. And that is what I will leave you with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Michael Nugent, and then Nicholas Sherman. Michael Nugent, you may get one ready.
Good time, I'm here.
Yes, I'm a New York City volunteer, recreation worker from Local Nine Eighty-three. I just wanted to ask, what does the city plan to do for the several hundred CPWs and CSAs that are set to lose their job next week that have worked for over two years or more? That they consider workers who are working for over two years or more seasonal? And they are all going to lose their job next week if they are not given an extension or a permanent position? And these are several hundred park workers who keep the parks clean. You know, they work in every single sorts of weather and all five boroughs. And I think it's very sad that they're all going to lose their job that they've been working since twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, five days a week, every single day, to keep all the city parks very neat for people to go there, and now they're all about to lose their job. So how does the city plan to make them not lose their job? And that's all I will say.
I have a question for the panelists. What, what position that you have in the department and where you're notified that it would be needed that much?
Yes, the city seasonal labor and CPW are all losing their jobs by September thirteenth.
All right, we will look into that because we're on there, but they're standing there now. It was ready to be in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Nicholas Sherman. After that, we'll be on the in-person panel. If you hear anything, you can start making your way to the dais. C Smith, Eve Shire, Bonnie Scallan, Cala T, Cala Tiddies, and Billy Cozies. Nicholas Sherman, he may be getting one ready.
Good time, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair, for meeting my group of people in this vital hearing. My name is Nicholas Sherman. I'm a New York City Parks employee as well. I work for the Capital Division. And I'm a proud member of B C thirty-seven. I testified today as a worker and a New York City resident deeply concerned about the rapid attrition taking place at city agencies. I strongly recommend the city council working with the state legislature if necessary as a law for city workers whose jobs can be done to make homework as per the pandemic. The option to telework two days a week or not compressed schedules and Monday a week are compressed schedules. I also urge the city council to advocate for substantial reasons for bright city workers and to urge demand to start negotiations with B C thirty-seven to replace the contract with our last year. It's an honor to be a municipal employee and serving the people of this great city. However, the private sector has job openings that offer people flexibility and higher salaries. This has attracted thousands of city employees to leave as people need reduced commuting time before and after work to help take care of their own personal healthcare, child, and elder care needs. This makes sense to me, especially in a state where more universal healthcare complete need has only recently been introduced and where universal healthcare and elder care is not a reality even in this deadly pandemic. Also, less commuting time made possible by teleworking lets people to have more leisure time to be stressed from the demands of life and work, which has been especially so during the global pandemic and all the associated complications that came with it. People realizing this pandemic that life is short, when they could be working a job that allows them to work one or two days from home is a vulnerable age in the face of inflation. People don't want to spend two or three hours a day taking the train or driving to work. They're going, they're being, uh, when they happen, or they will live in this work.
Good time, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I submitted the rest of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the in-person panel. Panelists, you can go one by one. Please just state your name before you give your testimony.
My name is Philly.
My name is Philly Cozes, and I'm a healthcare worker. I was a healthcare worker, worked for thirteen years in nursing home. And uh, I was like, oh, because I refused to put this stuff in my body, the COVID vaccine, uh, experimental to get to my religious beliefs. Um, they accepted my religious belief, right? They gave me an exemption, but they could not accommodate me, uh, which is illegal, which is unlawful. Uh, the Department of Health took it upon themselves to remove religious exemptions from healthcare workers when they don't have that authority, okay? This is complete lawlessness and it was allowed to happen, okay? The Department of Health has now made laws. The Assembly, the Senate, they come together, they make bills, and if they pass them, the governor signs them. This is total lawlessness. And now we're seeing that the science was never followed from the beginning. Masks don't work, the COVID vaccines did not work, people getting booster after booster after booster, and they're still getting COVID. Then they changed the goalposts. They say, oh, um, you know, oh, it's not that it prevents COVID, but it prevents you from dying. It prevents you from getting sicker. It's all bull and it's all fake science, okay? And now the CDC comes out and says that there's no difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated, yet we're still playing these games, these pandemic games, and that it's not happening, okay? So when are we, and I'm thanking the public servants who are here right now, who are respecting us and staying and listening, because the other half is disrespectful and disgusting and left. We sat here to listen to you guys and happy you are saying nonsense all day long. Nonsense, and I'm here patient listening to you guys, okay? Talking about silly little things. And this is the most serious thing that can happen is you guys violating our rights, okay? Uh, and we're gonna win this battle, whether it is in the courts, whatever's gonna happen, we're gonna win this battle because the truth is on our side, uh, history is on our side, science is on our side, and we got this.
Thank you, not speak at all, yes, thank you.
My name is Bonnie Salak Aldean. I thank the council for the opportunity to speak, especially my councilwoman, Vicky Paladino, who has been a tremendous support to me and to my family. I was a New York City public school teacher for twenty-eight years. I was hired in nineteen ninety-three. I was fired for misconduct on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. After multiple attempts of applying, attempted to get a licence exemption for vaccination, they were all rejected. I don't want to face, and I was fired without faith. I must add that I also had a license exemption and vaccination place for my children for years that was approved with a permanent education. That stood until law changed. I can't say anything now because you're in the left, but that was what Jeffrey did with Sean. Why did you believe me in two thousand and seventeen and you did not believe me now? I have to also add that I have a stable child who just returned to his special education program yesterday after exclusion. He is now eighteen, the law that excluded him, the law applies to him. He is back in school getting his special education services despite his vaccination status. I am missing Vicky Paladino from school today on a second day of discipline five to be here today. I'm also missing the second day of school today as a pre-k teacher, which I was for the last seven years. Believe me when I say that pre-k children have been harmed by the inability to properly staff classrooms. The substitute who took my job in October two thousand twenty-one had no early childhood experience. I should be in my classroom, I should be working this mandate that took this from me. It also took away how I provide for my family and how I feed my children. The pandemic is over, we are here mostly maskless. The governor just lifted the mandates for the mass transit, okay, turns out. I want to work, I have worked every day in person last year, I worked in person, not remotely year before. I want to return to my school. I will never go against my faith. The city has tied my hands. It is my understanding that there are four thousand vacancies in the daily vacancy list. Uh, plus you have been fired this week. I have seen that list online. It makes no sense to permanently experience dedicated teachers who want to work. Could you feel well, thank you. Please talk some sense, may I have some thinking?
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Greg. I'm here for city workers. I want to thank Mr. Holder, Ms. Mario Marola, Ms. Paladino, and Ms. Earl Ramco for standing up for city workers. We won't forget when the time has evolved. And I've seen council members who hasn't stood up and you know it's wrong what they're doing to city workers. City workers have voted for y'all throughout your political career. From Adams to Blasio, you name it, city workers has came to back. And the city council should not sit by and not speak up for them when y'all didn't have a vote, you were begging for votes and didn't have a window to throw it out. You came to city workers and asked them to vote for you and to watch them to see what's going on while they getting ready to hire twenty-five teachers from another country.
Wow.
And you sit there and you don't say nothing. And these big paid union dudes for years. It's a shame, and we are gonna remember. You better make sure we gonna remember when you come asking for our votes in front of train stations.
That's right.
And now we gotta beg, we gotta beg these people that sitting up there in line while they eating rice with no gravy and everybody else is getting a check. You better talk up for them because we gonna remember. We gonna remember because they're gonna come again. That's why they want us to vote now.
Thank you very much, sir.
That's how I want to back your jobs.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next we'll hear from several new panelists. And then I hope Virginia Lee testified, followed by Ludah, Demi Kowas, Gaia. Uh, Virginia, you may get one ready.
Good time, Michael.
This is Virginia. Should we go out and go down and hold the child back and give you the worst?
Please go ahead. Ms. Virginia Allen.
Ms. Allen, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Um, my name is Virginia W. Allen and I was working for Yankee Stadium. At the beginning of the pandemic, I had eight part-time jobs. And then I lost all of these jobs in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty. I was hopeful that I was able to work two of these jobs and two of them came back. When can't be hopeful, the mayor Adams to Rover, all hope was lost. I was suddenly fired from both jobs, one of which was my beloved Yankee Stadium. I worked at Yankee Stadium for sixteen years and it was my favorite job. But now because of these draconian mandates, I am unable to work there anymore. I am a single parent of a two-six-sixteen-year-old. Currently, I am unwell fair and starvation is the norm. Defection homelessness is imminent, and I fear that I will break. And I know that my son will not be able to handle it if we have to go to a shelter. I lost everything, the only thing keeping me going is my son. We have no resources and I am losing hope every day. There are many days when I cannot get out of bed due to the overwhelming despair that I feel. Being unisolated in a city is like being in a touch room in India. We are relied and demonized for no other reason than we are declaring my body my choice. No one has the right to dictate that I must inject myself with an experimental drug. These vaccines have not been tested and the long-term impacts include myocarditis, blood clots, and death. I will continue to stand on my square and say no to these vaccines. I fight for all the workers who were fired because we all know that the panacea for this virus is not found in a needle. But mostly I fight for all those people that committed suicide for sheer loneliness and isolation.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Ms. Allen. We want to hear the next speaker, thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
And I, and now I'd welcome Ludah Demi Kowas Gaia, followed by Matthew Connor, and then Eliana Gordon. Ludah Demi Kowas Gaia, you may get one ready.
Good time, Michael.
Ludah, you may need to accept the unification.
Good time, Spasmo.
Let's come back to her. Uh, and now I'd welcome Matthew Connor to testify, followed by Eliana Gordon.
Time's close now.
Yes, Ms. Aldean, city council. I'm a seventeen-year veteran, nearest to the fire department. I was fired in seven twelve last year. Filed for reasonable accommodation request that was filed through the White's Pharmacy, and given under hardship that does not exist to voting. I appeal to the town, a good job manager de-cas, this D.R. protect. The answer, the last November. I heard that I have abandoned the path of freedom. I have been denied the opportunity, equal opportunity, from the city of New York during this process. I'm not sure what sort of my request, which are very well-doubtful in my thoughts, and my thoughts, and my, but I do not consider the past nine months to be the answer for simple requests of physical malady. In addition to my requests that have been under appeal, success. I have also sought out metal here to find out for the safety of administration of this medical watch, should I, during the course of that investigation, I have found that I have to know the importance. I could injure or kill if I choose to ask us, let's remain at work. My agency acquired a firm, City of New York, for a simple combination for over two months and has not given me an answer. Due to this staff nearest to New York that serve the city during nights and that I have met, I have very difficult to serve the people of the city of New York. And I, to my request, this is a major issue that has not been, and we are able to make sure that New York, yeah, that City of New York that serve the city well.
Thank you very much, sir.
I can't be on water.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Eliana Gordon. After that, we'll be calling a in-person panel to come up. So if you hear your name, please start making your way to the table now. Sandra McFadden, Mo, Luli, Olivier, Tricia, Pirlo, and Juan Helo, Colas. If I heard your name, please make your way to the table now, and we'll hear from Eliana Gordon.
Good time, Michael. Time's close now.
It looks like Eliana is no longer on the Zoom, so we'll move to the in-person panel. Panelists, you can go one by one, please just state your name before you give your testimony.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Will Delvery. Uh, I'm from New York, born and raised in Brooklyn, New York. I went to school in New York, Brooklyn, a homeowner in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn. I taught in the city of Brooklyn, starting in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, I'm a licensed Solusedi's teacher. Uh, uh, I have a bachelor's degree, master's degree, all qualifications. Unfortunately, I lost my job due to the COVID nineteen vaccine mandate. Uh, they denied my request for religious exemption. And uh, in Bed-Stuy, I want to highlight that I did reach out to my city councilperson, Shay Jose, who completely ignored me, wrote letters, explained my situation. So I completely am very appreciative of you guys sitting and hearing, especially the not from my district. So throughout the whole, this whole pandemic, we felt, uh, I felt basically in Bed-Stuy that I was voiceless, no one was here, was willing to hear my plea. But uh, I want to let you guys know now that we're still here. We have this organization called Educates for Freedom. One of the reasons why we started, because even though the city has fired me, I am still an educator, I'm still a teacher. You get what I'm saying? For twenty-three years, I've worked with the city schools, uh, public school systems, young black boys in schools that need to see more people like them, to be role models and to show them how to make it outside of the city. Because it's, it's difficult. It's difficult coming up in the cities, Brooklyn, New York is hard. We need role model. I realize that the kids, when I look at them, I see myself. I definitely am representing them with the kids. And I'm sad that I'm not able to continue to do what I'm called to do. Because this is not just a job for me. Like I said, I was born in Brooklyn, I am in Brooklyn. So when I see these children, I am there, they are me, all right? It's Brooklyn raising Brooklyn, New York raising New York. And the fact that the city and the mayor, who's also a product of the city, can't recognize that the injustice that's done to all of us because of what we chose is having residual effects on what's happening in the city. So don't be surprised by what's going on in our school systems right now. Don't be surprised because people like us who are dedicated to the job that we are doing are being deliberately barred from doing what the authorities want us to do.
Thank you. All right, we can hear the speakers, thank you, go ahead.
I want to say good afternoon to everyone, thank you for the time you're giving us. I'm just going to give a brief history of myself. I once was a, a single mother and the city of New York, uh, was the city of New York that gave me an opportunity to pay for my babysitter so I could finish high school. As a result, I went on to higher education. Eventually got married, thank God. But what I'm saying is to say what? Look at the foundation, the wisdom of the city of New York. Once I became employable, marketable, I had to go to become a math teacher. By the way, I'm a retired math teacher and came back out of retirement during a harder pandemic. I did my own, I did it voluntarily, I came in, always with my test results. Everybody thought I was crazy. I literally did any, now listen to this. As I'm teaching, I have one student to my left, one to my right, and I also was doing what they call online. It was against a UFT contract, but because of my dedication, because I never forget the bridges that carried me across. The city blessed me, so I said, I'm coming out, I'm going to help this city. And because I did not take the vaccine, I was terminated. Twenty-five years, they need math teachers. And I recently saw a young boy on the train, he said, and I engage people, and he said, oh, I'm going to the seventh grade. I said, fantastic. And I said, how much is, if I said one half plus one half, what would that be? He said, two over four. I always bet it. And I'm going to teach everyone the basic rule of, of um, fractions that takes you into algebra, uh, math and high math. You, when you see that denominators, that bottom numbers are the same, you deep the bottom number and you just add the top number, which is zero. number, and you just add the top number, which is different. Get us back in the classroom, get everybody back to your students.
Good afternoon, my name is Mario Coliao. I was a police officer. I have a privilege to join the department, the New York City Department in 2018, and also was granted for a recent accommodation, because I keep the beautiful Sabbath, which is Friday, sunset, to Saturday, sunset. Unfortunately, when this mandate came out, I was forced, or I was told, I'll take it or you get terminated. I chose to get terminated, because I didn't do anything wrong for design, and I believe it normal, I believe it, I believe it that we should have a choice. We work, the police officers work during the pandemic every single day. We work during the riots every single day without complaining, none of us. And even now, the police officers are in transit, they're exhausted, because they're working twelve hours a day, with some time with no days off, because of a shortage. So I'm here to say, bring us back, end this mandate, and I want to tell Mr. Mayor, tear down this mandate now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, next, here from a number of Zoom panelists. I'd first like to welcome Daniel Swerent, and then Peter Kandonov, and then Lilian Fitcher, followed by John McCary. Daniel Swerent, you begin with Red.
Time's close now.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Clur. I'm married, I've had two children, children. I was previously employed within the NYPD from January 2013 to July 2022. I was attempting to fulfill the requirements of the crime squad, formerly known as Brooklyn Gang Squad. As a kid, there were two things I wanted to be when I grew up, a New York Yankee and a police officer. Obviously, the first option, to act and act, part of was to fulfill my dreams and become a police officer. Ironically, if I had, flight tests would not be necessary today, because I'm being tempted for the vaccine mandate. Unfortunately, I am not a healthy affiliate athlete or entertainer. Therefore, I am not eligible to part of this protected class in the New York City tax system. Not only has City of New York violated the religious rule, including every city employee who has been given a religious accommodation, but the mandate is, uh, it's completely broken, it's broken. Back to the board of the front line, I'm a hacker, says we cannot work from home when the city shut down. Therefore, we acquired natural immunity to the virus. Going back to May 2021, during Governor Colo's press conference, he stated, you cannot mandate vaccines, because these vaccines are approved under something called emergency use authorization. By law, you cannot mandate vaccine approved under emergency use authorization. I myself went to a vaccine site back in June this year and requested a remain or spike vax, which the only two FDA-approved version of vaccine. They were not available, and I was told they have never been available, the NYPD backside. Also, as of last month, the CDC has revised their COVID, has revised their COVID-19 guidelines, and stated, CDC's COVID-19 prevention recommendations no longer differ with differential based on a person's vaccination status, because rarest true infections occur. Though they generally mind the persons who have had COVID-19 but are not vaccinated have some degree of protection against severe illness from their previous infection. Combine all of this with the fact that back in August of 2021, the director of the CDC, Rochelle Quincy, stated in reference to the vaccine, what they cannot do anymore is prevent transmission. That is, that was two months before the inception of the vaccine mandate. If anyone could explain a reasonable argument for why thousands of city workers are not receiving a vaccine that does not stop transmission or infection from COVID, I would love to hear it. The simple fact is that there is no logical argument that we made. You cannot make that sense. Now, nearly a year later, after losing thousands of city employees to termination, resignation, forced retirement, the mayor is still not voting on the mandate, crime is out of control and reaching epidemic levels while COVID, I'm just kidding, I'm just about done.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'm just about done. While COVID is reaching epidemic, while crime is reaching epidemic levels, while COVID is not reaching endemic levels, the mandate carries out of the guise of public safety, unwilling COVID, there is a very simple cure to the round of crime surge in our city. It's more police, it is experienced police. What the mandate is doing is making our city far less safe, losing family, experienced police officers, myself being one.
Sir, you gotta wrap up, please. Thank you. You gotta wrap up.
At one last point, Mayor Adams, may not remember me, the fourth day he was staying in office, he was president of my press conference, my gang kicked out. I was leading the best era. That time changed everything.
Thank you very much.
Well, now, here from Peter Kandonov, followed by Lilian Fitcher, and then John McCary. Peter Kandonov, you may begin on ready.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm just a police officer, I was a police officer until May of this year, when eleven years old, and I loved my job. I was lucky enough to secure myself another job, but I can say this, I would gladly come back to the job that I love. Now, I wish the DCS people stay back, because I really have some questions for them, such as, what makes him a religious authority, or my religious accommodation request, where one person with the same religion was able to get it, and me with the same request, none. And what I find funny, actually, is that I worked during the pandemic, and risked my life, and I got COVID twice. Now, booster shots are not mandated, however, if a person took just the original shot, they already don't have immunity from COVID, where me getting shot of COVID twice, I have more immunity probably than even people with booster. So, to Mayor Adams, I ask you to please remove the mandate that is not needed. We have officers that are willing to come back, because they love what they do. The other thing is, according to the latest statistics, more officers left by June this year than all last year. And officers that did not want to get vaccinated are part of that number. But unfortunately, DCS does not give record, even though it's hard to believe. And the other thing I want to mention is that, anyone who wants to join this job, if they hear the news that officers don't have contracts for many years, if officers are not treated well, especially nowadays, there is no respect for the uniform. And in many cases, officers, especially in the transit district, sometimes not seeing their family for days, why would anyone who wants to have this job? You know, that's all I got, guys. Please remove the mandate.
Thank you very much.
Well, now, here from Lilian Fitcher, followed by John McCary. Time's close now, you may begin on ready.
Hello, thank you for having me. I will be reading portions of my written statement. I currently work for the Department of Education, Division of Early Childhood Education. However, I resigned this week and will serve my last day later this month. I have resigned because I no longer feel my work has impact. I am unclear how my work fits into our collective mission, and therefore, I don't feel I can provide my best for children in this environment. It is my understanding that in the nearly nine months since our Deputy Chancellor began, about two hundred employees have either resigned or secured transfers out of our division. This has been extremely destabilizing and upsetting. With each person's exit, institutional knowledge has been lost, and the once-sustainable structure of workflow is now crumbling. To my knowledge, no effort has been made to assess why people are leaving, or what changes are needed to retain these valuable public servants. And I will add, there's been no attempt to backfill these positions. In fact, the division is currently planning to transfer even more employees out of their current roles within the division. This swift reduction of staff is also troubling, given that our division's current leadership lacks extensive systems-level experience, which is essential when serving thousands of children and early childhood educators. I am deeply concerned by the environment I am working in, how decisions are being made, and I'm worried that the damage done to our early childhood system over the past nine months will take years to repair. To retain city workers, we need strong leaders. I urge the city council to provide more oversight regarding the selection of new leaders for the Department of Education. I also urge the city council to mandate a minimum level of program and continuity during DOE leadership transitions, so that the uncertainty, frustration, and inefficiencies that have been experienced over the past nine months are not repeated for thousands of additional children, families, and city employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from John McCary, and then I'll be calling up a number of in-person panelists. If you hear your name, call now, please make your way up to the table. Daniel Ranier, Joy Amanda, Brendan Fogarty, and Patrick Vee, make your way up to the table now, and we'll hear from John D. McCary next.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody, this is John D. McCary. I was forced into retirement, I'm an eighteen-year lieutenant, I have C R disciplinary history, I've been involved in thousands of arrests, I have contracts to my own name, I've been involved in thousands of emergency incidents, I have incident. I was denied religious exemption for my sincerely held religious beliefs, as well as a medical exemption for the COVID-19 infection that I received in the lineup duty while serving New York City during the early days of the pandemic. I have natural forming antibodies that were approved, and that was denied. New York City, if us failed to tell the unvaccinated, who are now the most marginalized community in New York City history, would undo hardship, we are causing New York City that others are not. This marginalized community, along with our children, have been segregated, forced to be masked and tested, when others were not, not allowed to eat restaurants, or take inside, or play in sports, attend after-school events, and eventually, we would force them to employment, without even the ability to collect unemployment. We are being told our lives do not matter. City workers, city workers and residents accused of crimes are afforded due process and a trial before facing such consequences. Many continue working even after they are found guilty. All of this has caused irreparable harm to our mental, physical, and financial health, as well as the strength under all of our relationships. Murderers, rapists, and pedophiles are treated better than the unvaccinated. All I am asking is for New York City to be true to what it said on paper. Be true that you respect religious liberty and equal protection under the law. Be true that you respect medical freedom, truly believe the words, my body, my choice. Be true to that you respect others' philosophical opinions and want to give everyone a voice to the table. Be true to the United States Constitution, the New York State Constitution, the Human Rights Act, the New York State Civil Records Act of 1964, federal, state, and city O E O laws, as well as the O E O policy of every New York City agency, all who would enforce this mandate, all of which clearly define these mandates are illegal. All I am saying to our elected officials and to Mayor Adams, is be true to what you say on Twitter. New York City is no longer an equal opportunity employer. That title was earned by following the law, not given by winning an election. End the mandates, and to our colleagues and all of our only being de-passed. The fact that you had no answers to these questions, it's either incompetent, or it's intentional, and either way, it's unacceptable.
Panelists, you can go in order, just state your name before you begin.
Don't try to be panelists next, because you guys have been here all day, and I appreciate it.
My name is Daniel Tang, who says, New York. So if you want to fill twenty-four thousand jobs, one thing, ideological, stupid, anti-science mandates, and I'll mention they're a crime against humanity. Anyone who perpetuated or pushed this is complicit in that. And I haven't heard one person, since I've been today, talk about actual treatments for COVID, not a stupid mRNA gene therapy, which causes people to get blood clots, alpriditis. Even then, there's literally over a thousand side effects listed by the doctors. But, Ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, zinc, vitamin D, vitamin C, first, and lists of on and on. A study came out last week, ninety-two percent effective rate for Ivermectin against COVID mortality, a hundred percent effective against preventing hospitalization, over eighty thousand participants. Nobody talks about it. I've heard one mention that we've known since March of 2020, that hydroxychloroquine treats COVID, and we're still going on and on about this stupid gene therapy. So if you want to fill twenty-four thousand jobs, step one is to end the stupid mandate, point blank, simple. I'm tired of talking about flowery cafes, and I do nothing but a super wet test. And I want to touch on this, too. I know this is an employer crisis, but what we're doing to the children is another crime against the mandate. I just saw a study from the CDC, they did a survey, thirteen thousand participant survey of children, two years old and younger. Over half of them have systemic side effects from the shot. And from two-month-olds to, no, six-month-old to five-years-old, there's over a thousand in the Bay Harbor reports of little babies in toddlers, side effects from the shot, and over two hundred of them had to have an emergency room treatment.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello. Thank you for our guests. To those that did stay, thank you for waiting, thank you for being patient. My fellow New Yorkers back there, thank you for being patient as well. We're strong together. I just have a few things to read and try to do real quick, and I have a minute, forty seconds. Fortunately, what I want to read, and what I want to express to you all, first and foremost, of course, I am a New Yorker, one raised. I am third-generation Puerto Rican, second-generation Colombian, I'm a single mother, my son will be nineteen next month, and he didn't get to finish high school because of the mandates. I was here this time last year to give a testimony about how the school can open back up the DOE, because I was also a DOE employee, and today marks three hundred and sixty-five days I've been terminated. And my son sent me a statement last year that I wanted to read, I'm trying to read it within ten seconds. I won't pile over losing the graduation I've always envisioned, that was really changed by the new system, but it didn't, but it did damage my willpower, it damaged my willpower and will starve me for the rest of my life, as graduation is only one, and a lifetime experience. That's from my son, nineteen, who also wrote me a statement, I won't read it right now, but it'll let me know that seeing me struggle, knowing what I did, knowing what I saw on, it breaks him, when he sees how strong I am. Again, today makes three hundred and sixty-five days that I have been terminated. I had to face a choice. I was put in a position to choose stability over virtue and morality, but I chose virtue and morality. I committed my life to staying true to my morality as of three hundred and sixty-five days. I was forced into the decision that eventually became comfortable to choose, because my principles mean more than a paycheck, and my virtue means more than a value. I realized my life struggles destiny, prepare me to testify in front of God, and testify in front of you, to let you know that you need to repent. Three hundred and sixty-five days, I had no courage to fire, but that three hundred and sixty-five days being terminated, with a fire in me that said, go out and fight for your people, fight for New York City, just know that the people are coming. We will be on that side where you are, as you said, quiet, we will be there, as proven.
Thank you very much. Quiet, please, quiet, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Catherine Jean. I am a registered nurse. Before I was rightfully terminated, I used to work for the City Hospital, Queens, and also Young Adult Institute. On September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, I was placed on leave without pay, and was terminated on November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, from Queens Hospital. And on January fourteenth of this year, I was also terminated from Y D I. Both of these companies terminated me without acknowledging my sincere religious exemption letter, which I submitted to both companies' human resources. I was discriminating against my religion, which violates my Title VII of the Civil Right Act. We, the people, have the right to choose what goes in our body, especially if it's against our belief. And also, I believe my body is the temple of God, as it says in the Bible, and therefore, by forcing me to take an experiment vaccine, which until now, there is no transparency on what's in this vaccine, also myself, I had COVID in twenty twenty, and I developed natural immunity, and since then, I've been fine with no COVID. This left a big impact in my life and also in my family, because now I'm left without a job. I love what I used to do as working as a nurse, taking care of my patients, which also is a great reward for me, because it was always my dream as a young girl to become a nurse. which also, um, is a great reward for me because it was always my dream as a young girl to become a nurse. And now I felt that for the past years, went down the drain. This has caused great impact, which is financially, I had to work in some Christian schools because I couldn't afford to keep them there, you know, a lot of bills, I'm in a lot of debt. And it's been very harsh and I will, and I hope the mayor change their mind and give us back our jobs. Thank you very much.
Quiet, please, quiet. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Brendan Foberde. Hello, everyone. My name is Brendan Foberde. I was a captain for the New York City Fire Department. I served for twenty years and, uh, I went from being essential to being disposable from the mandates. And, uh, my religious exemption was denied and I received those threats of termination and retaliated. I would love to go back to my job. I normally get nervous when I speak in front, in places like this and I always say this prayer. Grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. We're going to be on the right side of history. The people who are against us are against civil rights and religious freedom. We deserve to have our jobs back. I can feel this. Some people can't figure out how to, how to close this gap. Get rid of the mandate, okay? We'll get our jobs back. That, that'll narrow the gap. Get rid of the mandate so you can attract more people who actually have values in their lives and will come to work in this city, okay? I never took this job to be rich. I took it to be secure, okay? I knew I wouldn't get rich. But I, I was told it was a secure job. I had four children and a wife. And then they say it's all, I would have been better off becoming a Metta or Yankee, but I gave up that dream in fourth grade, alright? Fifth grade MVP, right? Good chip of the league, alright? I had a shot. Not anymore, okay? I gave my best years to this city, twenty years, from twenty-one to forty-one, and then they take it away at the peak of my earning career. I made it to captain. I went through that process. You should, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Eric Adams is going to be on the wrong side of history. The people who look back and the same people who thought slavery was okay. The same people who thought segregation and street standing was okay, okay? As a segregator, I was allowed to work in this city, but I wasn't allowed to eat in a restaurant in this city. I was allowed to work through the pandemic, but I wasn't allowed to eat in a restaurant. I could quit any uniform, go to a burning building, but not in here. What's wrong with you people? Trust the science? You got your fuck up.
I'll call up the next panel. If you're ready, you can come up now. Margaret Chu, Lauren O'Rourke, Ingrid Romero, Paul Rivera, Josephine Valdez, Interas, uh, Sivinya. Since we have three more chairs, let's also bring, um, Brian, uh, Fain.
Flynn.
Christina Fela and Luaka, Luaka Gao and Nui Fei Chukwue.
Go ahead. You know, we'd like to start.
Hello, from here, I'm Brian Flynn for the record. Uh, I was a client owner, local fifteen oh six with the Department of Parks and Recreation for the City of New York. For the record, none of the discharged employees did anything wrong. They did nothing wrong legally or morally in order to lose their positions in the City of New York. Secondly, our previous panel, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, was the review board, the appeal board for the exemption process. How do I know that? My emails will prove that. Also, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services on their appeal website said, "If you do not have a city employee email, you are automatically disqualified from the appeal process." Fact, provable and visible in a court of law, municipal, state, and federal. They have the numbers. Okay. On another note, I was told to say, Brian, when you get here, tell them how the mandates impacted your life. I have a question from everybody here. Masked and unmasked, vaccinated and unvaccinated, I want to ask you all a question. How did these mandates not impact your life? Can any of you answer me that question? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Christina Fiala. Unlike many others out there, I'm just one teacher who have been greatly affected by these mandates. Before I begin, I'd like to mention that I've submitted a longer version of what I'm about to say. I beg you all to really read it. Don't just skip through it, please read it. At least, at least, I just weren't a boss through these mandates. But these mandates have taken only from our students because they're the ones who are affected the most.
No, keep, you're fabulous. Keep going. We want to hear you. You're wonderful. We appreciate you very much.
In order to better this and my story, I must first give you a little background. I had four goals in life. To go to Italy, to be a wife, a mother, and a teacher. These mandates took what should have been amazing, happy moments in my life and maybe been to savage stressful times. It may have been two thousand twenty-one I was married and became a wife. A week later, I had like a scapular laser wound surgery for endometriosis, which is one of the many obstacles that my husband and I had to go through in order to become pregnant. It was on my honeymoon that I found out I would become jobless because of news about the teacher mandate broke out. A week after we returned to home, I learned that I was pregnant. And less than a month later, I lost my job because I refused to take an experimental shot that had no effectiveness and ridiculous amount of negative side effects, many of which directly affected my health. Being a high-risk pregnancy applied not for medical exemption, but for medical accommodation. This was because it did not fall into the DOE slim category of accepted medical reasons for an exemption. I was also told by numerous doctors that they were not allowed to write an exemption letter for being pregnant. I did however get one doctor to agree to recommend working remotely or in limited capacity since the CDC did consider being pregnant a high risk for dangerous forms of COVID. While waiting for the decision on my medical accommodation, I also tried to apply for religious exemption. As Roman Catholic, there are multiple reasons that refuse injection. When I attempted to submit my exemption in the sole system, I was blocked from applying.
If you can wrap up, we will read every word and re-adjusting.
Um, essentially, I was the last apply for religious exemption, um, because by the time I got it, now, um, probably deadline was over. Um, so I'm sure many people think, "Why can't you just go to another state and teach?" But the simple, the answer is simple. It's impossible. Working as a New York City public school teacher in this system, you give a gift you can't receive anywhere else. As a New York public school teacher, we're supposed to work with a diverse group of kids, each with their own story, their own needs and very weight they tie to our hearts. We have the lasting impression. Being a New York public school teacher, it's easy to use the world. I'm just one teacher, I'm one staff member. There are thousands like they're out.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming today. Next, really appreciate it.
Before I start, I want to say, I'm reading this from a pocket of Josephine Valdez. Um, she had to leave. She was our head professional for the DOE and she had to leave for.
Go ahead.
So, Josephine states, "I will not conform to the political corruption that has taken over this nation. I am not here to bend for my job back. I am here to simply state the truth. The fact that we are heading into twenty twenty-three and New York is still under unlawful mandates solidifies my distrust in our government. While I sat here, I looked up to the ceiling and read the following quote from Abraham Lincoln, 'A government of the people, by the people, and for the people.' Does that not hold true anymore? I never consented or supported any of the unconstitutional abusive lack of procedures and mandates. They helped to increase the destruction of our humanity. Like most abuse victims, we were placed in isolation and held captive in our own homes to private access to our daily activities under the guise of public health and safety. Firing me and many others while coercing and threatening us is not about safety, it is about control. My parents came from Dominican Republic to seek a better life in America. Living here is no longer an American dream, but instead has become the American nightmare. I will never forget what has been done to us, even when we attempt to love bombs, just like an abuser does, into thinking we are going back to normal. You cannot undo the humiliation, the division of families, the many children that have committed suicide and denial of basic human services, the increase of drug and alcohol use, businesses destroyed, and trillions of dollars that went to the corporations while we the people suffer. Anyone with a moral compass knows that these mandates are wrong and was done to punish the rebels and truth seekers that conceive of manipulation. This meeting mentions job loss and open faking scenes as if many of you in this room didn't accept and consent to that removal of our God-given freedoms. When it comes to this supposed pandemic, the solution to a problem shouldn't cause more problems. Unless this was purposely designed to create all the issues that we are facing right now. So many experts and not one psychologist that could call out all of this that has been taken out of the playbook for cycles of abuse. I know the truth answer and I know that some, if not all of you, know that as well.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lauren O'Rourke. I'm a retired NYPD detective from the Future Divorcement Division. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of my former colleagues who are too afraid to speak out due to retaliation from the upper management of the NYPD, which I'm sure Mayor Adams himself can attest to. Thousands of NYPD officers were mandated to vaccinate or be terminated by October twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one. The vast majority of those officers had already contracted and recovered from COVID during the height of the pandemic. They contracted it through poor ventilation and inadequate P P E while they worked. We brought up natural immunity at the time in lieu of vaccination. We were staffed, even though thousands of years of science dictates naturally acquiring a disease and recovering from it is the best protection against severe illness from the virus. The CDC and the rest of the experts are finally acknowledging what we have said all along. The exception being the New York City Health Commissioner Ashwin Hassan in his appointed role. The City Council just a few weeks ago passed landmark legislation for women named the maternal health bill. Hundreds of NYPD officers who were pregnant or undergoing the grueling process of fertility treatments were treated like pariahs. They were forced to choose between their unborn children and putting food on the table. They were forced between taking a shot for a disease that they had already acquired and their own chances at motherhood. Their medical accommodation requests were denied in the coolest way, as we all watched unvaccinated millionaires play a sport or hold a concert without the same mandate. The fact that the City of New York cannot grant these women even a temporary accommodation, which is cool, unscientific, and elitist. There are no long-term studies on this vaccine and there are effects on reproduction and fertility. As usual, women's health is pushed to the back burner by a man who knows better. The mandate is infamy, unscientific, and unforgivable. The damage these mandates have caused will not be forgotten quickly. The men and women of this department deserve better. The residents of New York City deserve better. Our student athletes deserve better. Our teachers, firemen, sanitation workers, and nurses deserve better.
Thank you very much.
And the Kukala workers that keep this city going deserve better.
Thank you for taking these mandates.
Hi, yes, my name is Tross Jiminy. Um, were you listening closely earlier today? I think that we heard some news from Circle Back Saki, little mini Jen Saki. And we're sitting right here. She used the following phrase. She said, "During the pandemic, or now, playback could take..." What does that mean? It means that the mayor's office considers the pandemic to be over during the pandemic, or now. Now is now. It's after the pandemic. A couple of weeks ago, a good friend of mine was given an ultimate invoker NYC employer. If the COVID jab or you're fired, violate your medical bodily autonomy with experimental injections or you cannot earn a living. Mayor Eric Adams violated my friend's body. He violated the bodies of thousands, perhaps millions of New Yorkers. This makes me sick and it resonates in a terrible human history. It does not matter that Mayor Adams doesn't enforce the private mandate. Reputable employers will never knowingly violate standing law. Therefore, the cruelty and human rights violations remain exactly the same. Why does the worker mandate still on the books if it's not even enforced and there's no emergency? Imagine if politicians ripped away your ability to earn a living if you didn't submit to a medical intervention that you did not want, that can be medically dangerous to you, that you don't need because you already have the disease, that causes heart problems, strokes, blood clots, and suppresses your immunity, that doesn't prevent infection or transmission, that we know has been lined up over two years by politicians, public health officials, the media, and people who wear white lab coats who call themselves scientists and physicians. The consequences of making your own medical decision is that you'll be unable to pay your rent, to buy food for yourself, to buy food for your children, to pay your bills, to buy gas for your car, for an entire nine months. What I've described is pure cruelty and I will go so far as to call it pure evil. Anybody who does not stand against this, pure evil. The Nuremberg Code prohibits governments from leveraging coercion and forcing unwanted medical interventions. The code is clear. The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that whoever's involved should exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, to see, to address, or reach another alternative form of constraint or coercion. I am nearly completely okay. I must put the mayor's COVID hypocrisy on the official record. Barely a day goes by without pictures of Mayor Eric Adams plastered, uh, in dense crowds all over, all over social media. No masks anywhere, no social distancing, packed events every single day. There is no emergency anymore in New York City. Mayor Adams is fully injected, he's fully boosted, he's got COVID and he likely spreads to others. New York City is the greatest city in the world. We're the people who live here. End the mayor's worker jab mandate. Let New Yorkers work. Stop violating human rights. Look right up there. It says, "Let us have peace. Let us have peace."
Thank you very much. Stand up, church, say a.
Is it possible? I want it to be square. Is it possible? Is it possible? Okay, uh, my name is Paul Rivera. I'm a New York native. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate, taxi drivers in New York City. Uh, if they get pulled over and they cancel proof of vaccination, they're going to get ticketed. Uh, what I have a challenge for you is, and for the council, thank you for staying, because I spoke to the other two council members and they just walked right out. Mayor, Mayor Eric Adams knows who I am. Well, I'm a council member who knows who I am. Mr. Eric Adams used to be the borough president of Brooklyn. When he was the borough president of Brooklyn, listen carefully because this is a challenge for you guys. He was letting his staff at Brooklyn Borough Hall get tested while everybody else had a deadline of October twenty-ninth. I have audio from a staff member that he knows that's been with him for many, many years, working in Brooklyn Borough Hall. I have the audio from her. She worked at Brooklyn Borough Hall and now she's working at City Hall. And she says she doesn't want to get vaccinated. She said her mother got fired because she refused to get vaccinated and she had a pneumonia. So I have the audio here. You could ignore it, but I have a fellow driver. We got other people here recording it. I reached out to Captain Miller from District Forty-Eight months ago. I spoke to, I spoke to her before she left. And she looks at me like I'm, like I'm an idiot. I myself am not vaccinated. I'm against mandates. I'm against mandates. And this, this mayor is doing that at Brooklyn Borough Hall. You don't think he's doing it here in City Hall? I have the audio. If you guys don't want to do nothing, if you think there's some kind of crack, fine, no problem. I'm working with a reporter with the New York Post who's doing the story on it. You can ignore it, but do whatever you please. It's all out there now. It's all up to you now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I say that if you want to hear the next panel in person, thank you very much.
If you hear anything called, please come to the table now. Audrey Denise. Rachel Vinescale.
Oh, she left.
Bayumi. Bayumi Yijima. Fernanda Memia. Rashad Taylor. And Monica and...
Go ahead, whoever wants to start.
Please just state your name before we begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ors Dennis. I want to first thank all those who came to put this common sense hearing together for us to come and express ourselves. And I want to thank all my fellow coworkers in all the different agencies who expressed themselves today, and thank you, committee, for hearing us. Well, I'm a school secretary. I've been in this system for 29 years. And I didn't take the vaccine. It was against my belief. I also didn't file for religious and medical exemption, and I was denied. And I just want to say, I was out of the country when I first got rid of this, noticed that we needed to be vaccinated by September. And Michael Mulbun, who was the UFT president, he is pro-vaccine. And instead of him recusing himself, he didn't. He went on to cheer on vaccination without ratifying a vote with the members. So now this mayor, the last year, the former mayor, he too was always pushing for the vaccine with Chachki, Martin Scheinman, who is the arbitrator, who they all colluded to create this mandatory vaccine. And it was at that time when the president of the union, the UFT, decided to have this accommodation. But the accommodation was overseeing by people who didn't have any belief in religious belief. So now we have to file appeals, file support cases, and these appeals are going on with lawyers and judges, and these judges have their hands all dirty, because they have stocks, they have shares in all these different vaccines. So I just want to say something to with this, my body, my choice. When we saw the case with the Roe versus Wade, we saw where our Michael Mulbun and others who refused to allow us to have our own rights said that he is for my body, my choice. But yet, whose body was it when they were asking us to vaccinate? Whose body? Was it his body? Is my body his body? All right. So I want to say, as leaders, we need to have people who are courageous. People like, we have this gentleman here, Mr. Holden, and Joanna Arora, and Sister, who, her name, it failed me now, and the other day, Dexter. We are thankful for people like that, because in my community, Leroy Corrigan, when he saw me voting in June, he said that it was unvaccinated who caused it to get vaccinated.
Can you wrap up? Do we want to hear from your call?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to say a few more things to wrap up. I just want to say, with the, with us not working, they should have been a due process, thirty, twenty day process. Like was mentioned before, that we all should have been charged. Our union failed us again, because they allowed the DOE to take us up for a job for a vested and tenured and need to get our benefits. I was just waiting to pay off my student loan. And these people, not me and my husband out, my husband had to finally say, okay, so then retire, just because we needed to get some money coming in. They've devastated all our lives. And so I'm glad to let this go out, because Mayor Eric Adams did not speak with us. He went on doing the same thing to Glasser, even you take the job or no paycheck.
Thank you very much. I want to hear from the next speaker. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Bayumi Yijima, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here. I'm here because I'm concerned about vaccine mandate that has affected thousands of people, including my family. And also, I'm seeing so many people have jobs have been terminated as they already have already barred. I came here from Japan as an adult, because Japan and New York City was my dream city. The United States is a great country. I was so happy to be here until the pandemic happened. I thought New York City was the greatest city in the world, but my concept of my view has completely changed since the pandemic. After the pandemic happened, the long lockdown, thousands of small businesses were killed. Like, oh, it's probably just temporary, okay? And the vaccine came. I made my personal medical choice, because it's an experimental vaccine. I thought I was not going to take it. I at least was going to see how it works. And vaccine mandate came. I couldn't go to a restaurant and explore there from in dining restaurants, drinks, so you name it. But I thought it's going to pass temporarily. In December last year, Legia de Blasio, then they imposed vaccine mandate for employer, permanent employer. And that actually shocked me, that the United States, New York City, has to have freedom. What happened to this country? What happened? I came here for freedom, for any good opportunity would happen to this country. I'm so disappointed. And, and this, okay, and I thought it was temporary, and much, I know there are professional athletes exempted. Okay, I want to wrap it up. So I thought, okay, vaccine mandates can finally be lifted. And CDC guidelines came. And what happened? Nothing. New York City still has a vaccine mandate for all employees and constable officers. So I just demand, I just want the vaccine mandate to be lifted at all costs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, um... So I'm speaking on behalf of Rachel, and just like myself, Rachel was with the Department of Education, and she was terminated in April of this year. She was on hold, she was on leave without pay, we had her in limbo. And from what I understand, with those who are leave without pay, they were not able to go and find another job, and they were never able to apply for unemployment, which makes it different from me. You know, we all have different stories. But as far as the Department of Education, and we have a shortage in the Department of Education, we have so many seasoned teachers, we have so many veteran, even paraprofessionals, people that want to do the job, but they were let go, so they have a shortage, and you have so many people, all they have to do is lift it. All they have to do is lift the mandate to allow these people to come back to work, those that want to come back to work. There are some, myself included, and a few others that I know personally, that they don't even want to go back, even if you do lift the mandate. The trauma, the PTSD, honestly, we all have suffered some form of PTSD, CPST, complex PTSD. We would never be able to truly heal from what has happened, because we've been humiliated, scarred, for those who have taken it, because they thought that was the only choice that they had, and they will forever be paid. They will never go back to the city. But the ones who are dedicated, the ones who took their body into their hands and made their choice their own, if you lift these mandates, they will gladly come back and serve the city that they love so much. But then there has to be the incentive, and what will happen as far as the apology, back there. There has to be some kind of incentive or something that says, you know what? We did you wrong, and we are responsible, and we're going to take accountability for it. Give them back back there, give them whatever it is that they desire, because it's a limited BTO, whatever they deserve, because the city, New York City, is nothing like the people. You guys don't have to see so much, we vote.
Thank you very much. Next, sir.
My name is Rashad Taylor. I was a firefighter in Bronx, six years, in 1961, and I was born in the Bronx. So I'm not here because I feel in my soul that there is something that I need to confront and take care of. I ask for you to truly open your ears to listen, and open your heart to feel. I believe we are living in fear, and that fear has made disguises. I fooled myself into thinking I wasn't, and that I was being strong, but I was, I wasn't looking for fear. I was placed on leave without pay in October, right after having a newborn daughter. And it's been terrible, honestly, but I was put on leave without pay for five months, and I was terminated in February. I never thought I would have to look for another job again. I got on my job. I was totally, I believed I was the best job in the world. I had tremendous respect for it, but it slowly diminished when they started persecuting the members and disposing them like a number of standing up for themselves. The mayor, city, and the fire department arbitrarily made decisions that were most convenient for them at the expense of others' livelihoods that has no scientific basis at all. I was slapped in the face with a rehiring letter in June. And I don't care if I go back or not, because it's bigger than any job. I don't care about what you choose to label yourself with or identify as. We are all humans first. Before I'm a firefighter, I am a human first. Pretty much all labels and categories are divisive constructs. We're not separate. We are all one. Stand for is objectively right. Policies and mandates are not laws, if you guys don't know. There is only one law, and that is natural, and that comes from our tree of God. Anything that conflicts with that is non-limbor. Rights can never be bought, sold, given, or taken away. We are all inherently sovereign beings, and we have enforced this illusion that are contrary to those facts about our rights. I just have one more point. Has this ever been about how really think about the all the regrets that has transpired in stories we are led to believe that has caused fear, chaos, division in a lot of aspects of our lives? For what, it isn't justified, or my health is no one's responsibility but my own. Everyone's health is their responsibility, and I owe nothing to them but honorable due regard based on objective facts, because there's no scientific basis about any of this. I'll leave this by asking everyone to embody truth, love, light, justice, and peace.
And I appreciate you. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Monica, and I just wanted to say, I didn't lose my job due to mandates, like so many people here. I lost my job because it shut down due to lockdowns, but I'm seeing the effects every day of what these mandates have been doing to everybody. And it's actually been hard for me to find a new job because of these mandates. It's been over a year. I refuse to get vaccinated, because it is my body, my choice, and I don't need any other reason than that. All you have to do is look around to other states to know that these mandates are not about being necessary to keep us safe, and they're the reason that everybody is jobless in New York and fleeing New York to both places like New Orleans, Florida, who doesn't have mandates. I heard some of you asking for solutions to the large number of unemployment in New York City, and the solution is simple. Remove the mandates, period, for all companies, not just city jobs, but for the whole city. And how about using the funds that were wasted on advertising for these vaccines and ads for people to comply with masking, et cetera, on job trainings instead? Use the funds for lowering crime in the city, like hiring more NYPD and removing their mandates as well, so that people actually want to stop leaving and stop being scared to be here. And maybe use some of that money also to help businesses stay open and/or reopen the ones that couldn't survive the pandemic, I mean, the pandemic. New York City is suffering, and it will only get worse if something isn't done now. Use your voices, I implore you now, not just as our public servants, but also as fellow New Yorkers to fix what has been done to all of us.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Fernanda Memia. I'm a Hispanic single mother who had worked for the fire department for over 22 years. I was a female firefighter. I was forced to retire after being threatened. I would lose my job and my pension if I were not vaccinated. I was denied over legislative exemption. My right to privacy of medical information was violated by the fire department. And I was outcast and alienated from the coworkers I'd worked for so many years, because my rights, medical choice, were being violated, the very freedom this country stands for. And I knew this was wrong. This was not just my job, my lifelong career was being taken. See, Blake, in the wings of mine, I'm still at this feet that this has happened. I worked during 9/11, I worked during Hurricane Sandy, and I worked during the most recent disaster of COVID-19. I would just like to remind everyone what firefighters and many city workers experienced during that time. While working throughout the pandemic tirelessly every other day at risk to my health and safety, and the risk of contaminating family members without the appropriate protective equipment, because even the fire department of the city of New York did not have adequate resources for protection of its workers, while being exposed to coworkers who had tested positive for COVID-19, were told by the fire department to report to duty. And while personally exposed at home, tested with my fiance, who tested positive, had an active cough and fever, and I'm still told to report to work for duty, at the risk of countless further contamination, all while being told I was essential. I was an essential worker. I was essential until my civil rights were violated, my right to choose, my body, my choice. I was essential to the vaccine mandate. I ask you now, with all of the new data concerning vaccine and its efficacy, new treatment availability, the information of transmission, as well as no differentiation between vaccinated and unvaccinated, why are the leaders of this city still imposing the vaccine mandate? My future stability was taken from me. The future of a stable pension to provide for my family is now gone. Return all workers who were affected and punished for their right to medical choice, restore justice to civil rights violation that was imposed by failed city leaders, end this vaccine mandate.
Can you wrap up? Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
One thing, the PR code, the Robin code. So many of us were not working, because there was a code that was placed in our record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now, for the next panel, if you hear a name called this one now, Moira Maroc, Gabriel Veltay, Danielle Holberg, Tenpeen, Mendel Bailey, Akila Norris. We welcome a few more names. Paul Schwelt, Tom Holset, Sophie Medina, Robert Mayno, and Taverne Deere.
So if there's anybody in the audience who signed up who has not spoken, who's signed up? Oh, they can hear me. Oh, they're coming down. Okay. And with anybody who's made a big call, please feel free to join us at the table. And with anybody who's been signed up but hasn't been called, please join us. Go ahead and start, please.
Hi, I'm Moira Maroc. I have been in New York for many years, the city that I love. I worked as an actor, and I'm being discommitted against six of the mandates. There are many actors who work background work, or who work principal work, or who work in theater. I'm also going to speak on behalf of artists that the city claims is an essential part of the city. They are the ones who entertain, whether comedy or whatever, to get people to survive this pandemic mentally, whether they were watching TV or otherwise. We're not able to work those who are unvaccinated. Whereas those who are unvaccinated, we are asking that the city investigate, our union, the Screen Actors Guild, along with other unions, because I listened today, I realized the union is a roadblock. It's a loophole, it's all of that. They are claiming to represent us, but they're not. So looking at what the union is doing would be very important. I'm about to lose my healthy chunk that I had accumulated before, because I voted right after the vaccine. Mayor Eric Adams teased us to give us hope by saying that entertainers and sports people would get exemption. Who got the exemption? The people with the fat back accounts. Many of us do not have that, and we have had to turn to the city, and it's an expense on the city to pay rent, to pay footstamps and all of these things, which also puts the strain on having workers. I have friends who work in the system who've lost their jobs as well. Then the footstamps people have to go for footstamps when the city is not paying them. In the meantime, that they're asking for exemptions, they're not getting it, they're entitled to it, and there is no payment while they wait. And I listened to the lady who was circling and circling and circling the globe. She has a job, and she should lose that job. So that's what I want to say. My body is my choice for abortion. My body is my choice for sex reassignment if I choose, and the city... My body, my body is my choice for sex reassignment if I choose and the city will pay for it. But my body is not my choice for what I go in to put in and participate in an experiment, the great experiment that is happening, that is a clinical trial. I did not sign up for it and I need to compensate for it. I'm losing pension. I'm losing insurance. I'm losing income. And the city cannot adequately provide what I need to survive. Thank God I do not have a kid. I really didn't feel it for these other people.
Thank you very much. Monica, please speak again.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danny Hookout. I was a, I worked with New York City Department of Sanitation. I was terminated for refusing to take the vaccine. I think the hardest part of this is the fact that we could have actually ended all this. My department could have done it, but our union said to us the mandate might happen. And then it went from the union that it went from something's not gonna happen, they can't do that to you, to, ah, just take it, just take it. It was disgusting the way that they handled it. It was disgusting the way the city handled it. We don't even work around the puzzle. You see us working, you don't come running up to us. I mean, it's not like we're in there acting on people all day long. And there weren't even that many of us at the union who had to fight for them. But they just didn't bother. And the worst of this is the fact that I begged my guys, I said, listen, fight this now. Whether or not you're gonna take it, whether you're gonna believe it, fight for it now, get ended. Do not let them do this to you. Why? Because they're gonna step up next and take something else from you. Just yesterday morning, the MLC voted to slash twelve dash one twenty-six of the Segavit Code, which is the city subsidizing the health care for both retirees and current workers. So everybody is pretty much affected by this. And then what's gonna happen is they're gonna force you into a single payer, for-profit health service that is not gonna benefit anybody but them. And this is gonna go before the city council soon and, and nobody knows about this. I talked to my guys, nobody knows. I went to our union meeting yesterday to, to attack, to confront Harry. And he's got, and there's no shops to it there. No, I had information to give to these shops. Nobody's there. Nobody knows what's happening. These guys are living in a tunnel vision. I'm just gonna be tired. I'm out of here. Well, good luck with that, because the minute you try to go down to Florida and your healthcare service is gone, you're not gonna have an outcome. So you're gonna come up to New York every time. You can still get GHI. In Florida, there's no place to go. It's not gonna work. If the city has a specific plan just for everybody, that's gonna be their benefit only.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Dalma. I worked for the Department of Sanitation for about five years. I remember feeling proud after I got the job. While the, while the old garbage trucks was not glamorous at all. A lot of the city jobs that we take, if we were not managed, but we showed up every day, even during pandemic, nurses, firefighters, teachers, EMTs, police, Navy. We were there. We were good enough then. We should be good enough now. In April twenty twenty, my mother Cynthia, bless her soul, she passed away. I took my four days bereavement and I went back to work. And I went back to work every single day during, during the pandemic. When my mother passed away, I took my four days and I went back to work. It's not because I'm an outstanding employer or anything like that. It's because it's my job. That's what I chose to do. And I said, I'd rather be at work, keep my mind busy and do some, at least for the city in my own, little, small way to help out. Rather than be at home going crazy. We're not where we worked before. These things don't make sense. The mandates don't make sense. People are hurting out there. People are losing their jobs, their homes. All the people that we call on, when we're in trouble, police, firefighters, EMT, nurses, schoolteachers, all those people, they were good enough then, but they're not good enough now. Has that made any sense? All I gotta say is that end the mandates. It's unconstitutional. It's illegal. And it's just downright not human, the way that we've been treating people. We got treated like yesterday's news people. We got treated like the trash that we're, that we helped to take out all the time. And the same with a whole bunch of other people in this city. This great city that we love, that we all signed up to take care of, that we all are part of. We need to be less divisive and more inclusive and get everybody back to what they do, to what they do best. Because you cannot replace the amount of experience that these people have with new hires. It just doesn't work that way. You, man, you said you've been around for a long time.
Long time.
You can probably attest to what experience means.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good time, Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
My name is Timmy. I was a tenant FDNY until I was terminated on July sixth. Thirty-three days shy of celebrating my twenty-third year. I had been on the block since November first. I had been filed religious exemption in October. I grew up in Milltown, Pennsylvania, which is near Hershey. I started volunteering with the fire departments. FDNY guys have come out, teach classes, and got me interested in working here. I left the Washington DC Fire Department in nineteen ninety-nine. Superintendent being a New York City fireman. Sadly, that change is taking the most serious turns in the past two years. In March of twenty twenty, I was still a firefighter at Edge and Sixty-Nine Park. We were performing CPR on a daily basis, often several times per day. I was promoted to lieutenant in May of twenty twenty. In every firehouse I worked in, at the, at the organ hatch, I had numerous members out for COVID. It was obvious, there was no way I had not been exposed to COVID whenever I was doing, was working. To say that we had been failed by those of the issue would be a huge mistake. From those who once banged pots and cheered you seven PM to unions and ignored sizable factions of their membership, do not like nor need the vaccine. To the leadership, leaders of the fire department itself, staff chiefs and staff chiefs who went along with coercion. The previous commissioners, the court remarks essentially calling us all scumbaggers. To the current ones who continue to allow them to be terminated for not getting a vaccine that obviously does not do what they said it would. We have seen failure, which failed leadership is. It continues on an almost daily basis. On an almost daily basis for Mayor Maria Antoinette's office as he exempts athletes and entertainers. But decrees to the people who actually live and work in this city, let them be taken. We are here asking for your help. We don't need heroes. There are thousands of heroes in the FDNY who do heroic things on a daily basis. What we need is someone in leadership to stand up for us. The champion of us and our righteous cause and to simply allow all of us to do what we have been doing long before the last two years inexplicably altered our lives and our careers. Let us work.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Dear. I'm a New York City tenure teacher. I worked during twenty twenty, twenty-one in person. And in addition to painting with my students, I also did health screenings. I luckily for myself received a health exemption. However, we lost two teachers in my school because of these mandates. I have numerous friends that are unemployed, un, un, underemployed because of these mandates that are on the brink of homelessness, who I am helping right now financially since I still am working. And I have also many colleagues and friends and family members who sadly were coerced into receiving these experimental, illegal injections because they're EUAs and it's not legal to force people to receive them as a condition for employment. People have to sign a consent form to be part of a clinical trial. And the people I know did not want this. They felt that they had to have it to maintain their employment. I, I'm very well versed and I do my research. But I don't have to because I know people, friends, neighbors, family members who had side effects ranging from vertigo to headaches that kept them in bed for a week. I've seen people staggering down the street and because it's that kind of neighbor would have asked them, what's wrong? And they said, I just got my second dose of Pfizer. And I, I have vertigo. I've seen two people in that condition. So I, I've seen, you know, many side effects and the common denominator is, denominator, excuse me, is that they've received these shots. And, okay, I'm going to stop in one minute. I cannot be cited anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to get on the last panel. If you don't mind, if you want to. Thank you.
Next panel, please. I also applied for a religious exemption and I work for the partner, Matt Diz and Wine. He's working right now and I'm not.
Go with the twain. Go ahead, look who number would like to begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Sophie Medina. I was born and raised here and I've lived here my entire life except for my time in Marines. This is my family. Tommy and I are firefighters, unfortunately without pay because we didn't take a shot that proved to be useless at best and harmful at worst. Five firefighters are suddenly dead after the vaccine mandates and many others are quietly suffering adverse reactions and they're afraid to speak out publicly. We both worked throughout the worst of the pandemic. We worked without proper protective equipment and we both acquired natural immunity. We went from essential to expendable and no one seems to care, which is ironic. Do you remember the pandemic with the passing of the pandemic in September, Keanu, remember? My face was viewed many times by the FDNY to recruit and promote diversity by the FDNY. Help us here in these chambers. I remember your face when I was testifying about the terrible treatment of certain women on this job. But since these mandates and the FDNY's problems to recruit and retain women like myself, since the mandates, we have been shunned from our place of work and from society in New York City. But there were no vaccine mandates to ride the trains and buses. We're vaccinated and unvaccinated. We're side by side this whole time. The vice of messaging from the top down has relegated my family and I and many others likely to become second-class citizens in our own city. We've worked in public service our whole lives. Tommy in Sanitation before this, myself as a lifeguard, as a teenager, a Marine before, and a firefighter now. Being a firefighter is not just a job for any of us. It's a vocation, truly a calling that takes a certain type of person who's both tough and compassionate. It's a dedication to serve when bad things happen and to help people on their worst days at their most vulnerable moments. We've responded to victims of assault. I've translated between patients and advanced medical providers. And we've operated at fires with little regards to our own safety and lives.
She can take my experience off.
Tommy has been twice decorated by the FDNY for going above and beyond at fires, one of them during the pandemic, no less. We've never asked anyone vaccination status when providing help and call. These mandates have taken away our ability to provide for our family. It is still impossible to find work in this city even after the shift from the CDC. The constant strain and pressure during this time has been really hard for my cabinet life. Years of hard work and saving money for our future have gone down the drain and will affect us on a generational level as it's taking away from our children and their future. And it's taking away from our parents, who we've been preparing to care for in their golden years. Our kids were forced out of their swimming classes and out of public schools since we won't subject them to participate in a system where their parents aren't allowed. Instead of recognizing that our stance wasn't deep right, we're still being punished by the city of New York. Our religious exemptions were denied and our medical exemptions are being sat on by the very people who are supposed to be preserving and fighting for our rights. There's no state of emergency and the city is bleeding out like you're trying to recruit while many of us are out of the cold wanting to work. And the city is losing valuable years of expertise. City jobs used to be coveted for providing job stability and now no one wants these jobs because they have greatness and disrespect to all the city workers who chose to stand up for themselves. Never forget that first responders were told the air was safe to breathe after nine eleven. And never forget that we were told that this crap was safe and effective. And here we are now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know who goes next. So please.
My name is Bobby Munovi. I'm an eight-year FDNY firefighter veteran. I'm the president of a charity called All Heroes of FDNY. It's comprised of volunteers who dress up as superheroes who visit pediatric burn centers and cancer centers around the country to lift the spirits of sick kids. I'm the most, I'm the most recent winner of the Patrick J. Murphy Award, an award that goes to the top firefighter, police officer, that's done the most for the community on and off the clock. I'm currently oddly without pay for eight months. I've fallen uncomfortably into debt despite receiving financial aid from friends and family. I'm engaged, but we've canceled all our implants until we can get back on our feet financially. And given the new CDC guidelines, I just want to get back to work. I just ask that we get back, put back to work. Thank you for your time consideration with this matter.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Vollo. I've been with the fire department for the past thirty-eight years. Chief in rank of battalion chief. Unfortunately, my career came to a brunt, a brunt end last year and the former member, former member apparently decided to implement a mandate that will take employees to experimental gene therapy because I was forced to retire. No need for me to explain why I did not take this experimental shot. Suffice it to say, I'm a believer in informed consent. I'm here today to give my uncorruptal support to the ready men and women in the fire department, NYPD, sanitation workers, teachers, and any other municipal authority who may have forced their job because of this unjust mandate or who still remain un薪 without pay. I've also recognized the potential bond with this mandate may have already caused each agency as a risk as an example, a certain part of many of its members in both leadership and their rank of fire. As the leader, I realize that one of my immediate responsibilities was to identify and inspire the future leaders of the organization. Now, in this past year, I've watched many new leaders come into their own, some of, some of whom you already listened to today. All right? Which under normal conditions would prompt me to encourage these members to step into the breach and fill the void of the natural efficiency process. But sadly, these potential leaders undoubtedly terminate or they still remain paid without pay. The worry created by these terminations and the forced order of compliance of many others is irreversible as these members took effect all their experiences and their knowledge. That would make me year before these agencies return to what we used to hold normal. I continue to keep these talented workforce, these, this talented workforce out of work where they chose not to be forced into receiving this job. There's nothing to keep people safe. But it does prevent them from hiring the services that they've been praying to do and that brings all their costs to the taxpayer. Every one of these people has been negatively impacted by this mandate. They showed up at work throughout the pandemic and a great personal risk, not only to themselves but to their families as well. All they are asking for is simply to turn to work so they too can provide for their families, just like the Mets, the Yankees, the Knicks, and the Mets. I don't believe that's towards us. And I do recognize that it made a difficult political decision for the mayor to assume this unnecessary mandate at this time. But hey, he was the newest police captain and I'm quite sure his honor has the moral courage to put aside all politics for a moment and simply do the right thing. Thank you very much, Bobby.
Bye, Monica.
My name is Paul Schwelt. I'm a firefighter for seven years with the FDNY. There's not much I can say that can sum up every single testimony that was given here today. But I do hope that it resonates with all the council members. And I do hope that a lot of the council members come back and look at the testimony and read them. Because our stories can never give you insight to what we endured these past, this past year. I pride myself as a, as a Marine and firefighter to be strong in hard times and stand up when standing's hard and even when I stand alone. But this past year, I had a son. And my son gave me the strength to do what was right in my heart. And I hope that the council members can find it in their heart to listen to these testimonies. Hear the struggles that we have gone through. This is not just about loss of pay. This is not about even vaccines. This is about enduring pain and suffering, which as humans, we can all attest to. We need relief. And the council members that have helped us through this process, we, they need your help. We need the mayor's help. And when I, when we're up here pleading for our lives, for our families, for future generations, it's not to take a political stance. It's to show you that suffering is real and it's almost unbearable at times. But the men and women in this, in this chamber, the testimonies that you've heard are family and this is what New York City is about right here. I don't know if you've ever heard in this chamber the, the amount of camaraderie and support ever before than in this testimony right now. So please take that to heart, understand that we need you to sign on to the other council members, plead for help, to talk to the mayor, to please release these mandates. Help us through this struggle to get back to work, not, not only for ourselves either, but for future generations and for the city to get back on its feet.
I would say thank you for the last in-person person to speak in a great summary. And we're glad that you were closer. And thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna go now to the final persons on the Zoom. Thank you very much. Councilor Holden has a question. Go ahead.
I just want to say, before, you know, this has been probably the toughest hearing to sit through as a council member. I've been almost five years now in the council. And I, I really feel, especially in the first, those who did their jobs. And I, I, I really feel especially in the first, those who did their jobs, you guys are the salt of the earth and you should not have been treated this way. And the city will make it up to you. I guarantee that the mayor will come, you know, come to the conclusion that we can't keep these mandates. I just feel that he's, he's a good man. We met with him. Uh, I think if he saw this testimony, like right around the city, he would tomorrow change that to do away with the mandates. But this is heartbreaking to hear. And I just hope everyone out there, this, you know, watches this and we, we, I don't know how much, how many press reporters are here, but this word has to get out. And, and, and this has to be done because it's not fair. It's not right. They, you all went through the pandemic like us, but you are on the front lines. And you are, you guys are heroes and we shouldn't treat our heroes, we shouldn't kick them in the head and say goodbye like that, especially with what you've been through. So, um, I admire you all. You're patriots. And I stand with you and I'll do whatever I can to, to convince the mayor because he can do this. He can lift it tomorrow and we have to convince him. But thank you all for your testimony.
I'd now like to welcome Tabitha Forte to testify, followed by Maureen Hurley and then Selly Batista. Tabitha Forte, you may be given ready.
Your turn, Maureen.
Tabitha, if you can hear us. You may begin. We'll move on now to Laura Higgin.
Time starts now.
Can you, Maureen, if you're ready?
Time's up.
Hi. Uh, I just have two questions and they're for the mayor. What science is the mayor following and the Department of Health? And why do they not recognize natural immunity? Thank you. That was it.
Thank you.
Selly Batista. Time's up.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me and thank you, Mr. Holden, for your, those words that you said touching. My, I am a sergeant police. I'm still employed with the New York City Police Department. Um, I also have a master's degree in human resource management and I've studied employment law. And this topic I, I know very well about because I studied it. Um, I'm here for my first amendment Friday to be here with you all as an individual. So let me just fast forward. I was denied my religious exemption. I later on was able to find a lawyer through several attempts and I found one during that gridlock of finding an attorney. I found one three days before I had submitted my appeal and I submitted it. After that, I got admitted. Like a week later, I was admitted in the hospital with chest pains, was put out from work two and a half weeks. Okay. I had to deal with lost friendships, lost partnerships. So you could just imagine the amount of stress for the past ten to twelve months, right? It's basically illegal pain and suffering. Okay. You've seen all the testimonies. It's all illegal pain and suffering. So July, I won and I was approved, but thousands have been denied. So one would assume, I'm a Roman Catholic, one would assume that at a legal standpoint, at this point, at a legal standpoint, everyone else should be similarly situated. If I was approved, everyone else would be similarly situated. But that's not the case. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, you know? My lawyer did ask me, she goes, I have a question for you. Were you working inside or were you out here working in the streets? I said, no, I actually work in New York City transit. So it's a lot more hectic, more people to deal with on a constant basis. Just he goes, oh, because I have so many clients getting, getting, uh, disapproved. Okay.
Can, can you wrap up? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just want to end with this. Religious interrogation is not up to the government. Okay? Religious interrogation is not up to the government. It's not for you guys to do. You're not divine. Don't have the power that God has to judge anyone. I just want to leave that, that was what I was saying. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from Emily Zepantis and Laura Hoffman and then Iliana Gordon and Karen Rosado. Emily Zepantis, you may be given ready.
It's on.
Yes. Hello. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi. Um, good afternoon. I'd like to thank you all, the council members, um, that are so, um, valiantly, uh, sitting there, listening to all of us today. Uh, thank you. I have a former, um, New York City school administrator and assistant principal for, um, seventeen years and I'm educated for twenty-three years in the city of New York before it was terminated. Um, I'm also part of the educators for freedom. And I am also one of the ones that worked during the 2020, 2021 year when everybody stayed home because of their body mass index, um, and their body fat content. I went into work every single day so that I can advocate for my beautiful students and my parents and the community in Jamaica, Queens, that I have been a part of for so many years. Um, it's egregious what they have done to us and more importantly, to the economy of New York City that I have been a member of for almost fifty-six years of my life as I was born and bred in Queens, Newark. Um, you want the best workers, you have the best workers. Um, educated, highly educated people, personally three diplomas and three certifications in education myself. Um, it's egregious that I had to sit there and listen to the woman in the green dress, the circle back T-class woman to lie in front of the council, uh, people there today. Um, we were not equal as we waited and waited to be, um, accepted by the citywide panel and the determination of whether our religious exemptions was going to be accepted or not and our accommodations was denied four times in a row. But it's okay. The worst part of it all to me is it's not the money that's been lost, even though I was making more than the principal as an assistant principal because I had more seniority. The worst part of it for me, um, was that my religion was being in question as a Sunday school teacher. That was the worst part of it. And twelve, about twelve years ago.
Can you, can you wrap us? I'm sorry. Can you wrap us? Thank you.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, I, I found myself sitting at the Queens Museum, uh, with about twenty-six of my teachers. And, um, we learned about the Flushing Ramonstrands that day because we were doing professional development. And the Flushing Ramonstrands, for all those people that don't know, really should look it up, was the precursor to the religion constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Freedom. And it all started in Flushing.
We need to wrap up. We need to wrap up. Okay.
Yeah, it all started.
Then we need to wrap up because we have more speakers to go. All right. Thank you.
I just want to, thank you. I just want to let everybody know that they should look up the Flushing Ramonstrands.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd now like to welcome Laura Hoffman to testify and then Iliana Gordon and Karen Rosado. Laura Hoffman, you may begin.
It's on.
Hi. Um, first of all, I, I want to work. In January of twenty twenty-two, I was fired from my job of ten years following an unpaid voluntary leave of absence due to the COVID vaccine mandates and my current rehired religious beliefs. I was tossed aside by Human Guard after being the dedicated worker of ten years. The unfair treatment you gave in decades of volunteer community work that I had done alongside my coworker employer and in the Greenpoint community on multiple environmental waterfront parks and housing issues. I've testified many, many times of what New York City cats are regarding those issues. Never would I have ever thought that I'd be testifying about my rights to work, my freedom of religion, um, or having control of what to put in my body, but here I am. My income and my ability to get another job were taken away. And it was needless since I had natural antibodies since March, since March twenty twenty following being sick from COVID. Given my community-based knowledge about environmentally linked diseases and knowledge about my own order of new diseases, I knew it was a strong possibility that these antibodies would serve protecting from COVID in the future. And now CDC is finally catching up, acknowledging what many people already knew. What hurts the most is that I truly love my job, my coworkers, my clients, and I'm still friends with many of my, my coworkers and clients that who sought me out on social media. I worked as a housing councilwoman, a respected nonprofit community organization under contract with HPD as a housing council, housing housing agency. As an essential worker, I worked close to the office and home with serving clients during the part of the pandemic. I made wellness crawls to seniors in an effort to prevent them from feeling isolated. The same organization that did this work, they want that higher fee for who I am and isolating Nick, a senior with medical issues.
Thank, if you could wrap up. Thank you.
Basically, the, the mandate focused, revealing harm to me and the harm, the harm way that I interact with the community. Um, I, I refuse to, uh, even eat out in establishments that didn't, that did not push back against the mandate. And, and still to the point where I myself have been fighting the environmental issues in this communities since a decade, I'm thinking about moving out of New York myself.
Thank you very much. If one of the council members has a question, if you just hold on a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I, I really just want to say thank you to Chairwoman, um, Del Rosa and to Chairwoman Ilva, because they, they were, they were worth a good round of applause. Because before today, people who were on leave without pay or people who did not get granted their leave or get granted their appeals were just that, words to many people. But today, now, because of their, their ability to have come and testify, we now have faces to make, to, to, to align with those needs. And anyone, anyone who can look at your faces and tell you that you were wrong, there's something wrong with that. There shouldn't be just eight of us signing on a letter. There shouldn't be just eight of us standing with you out front on the steps of City Hall. There should be fifty-one of us because in this city council, we fight for equality, gender equality, medical equality, equality for those whose civil rights have been denied. And I've heard all of that here today. So this needs to be a body of fifty-one, not just eight voices or ten voices. A body of fifty-one to meet with the mayor again and say to him, we know you're open to this, but we're working together to make sure that justice and racism and inequity is addressed. Because this is a room of diversity and of the people who elected us to protect them. And that's not what's happening here. So thank you for your courage and thank you for your.
Thank you very much.
Next one, you were Iliana Gordon, then Karen Rosado, then Dominic Francois, and then Tabitha Forte. Uh, Iliana Gordon, you may be given ready.
It's on.
Hey, I'm Karen Gordon. I'm a police dispatcher. I'm operating at nine one. And I'm here basically because of the horrible conditions that we are meant to work with on a constant basis. To talk about, we're paid a very low wage, special salary, the starting salary is thirty-nine and the top salary, I think, is fifty-six, fifty-seven. And virtually this whole summer, the New York City is running a sweatshop. That's basically what it is, a sweatshop. And if it was any other company, any other organization in the city, it would be shut down. But the city council, I'm just letting you guys know that you guys are running a sweatshop, right? Who wants to, you guys are there contemplating what else can be done on why people aren't working in the city. People aren't working, especially at my job, because they always aren't. Because nobody wants to make thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand dollars a month for, as a dispatcher. I mean, we do a lot of work. We cover seven, seven precincts, nine transit bureaus, right? And what, seven precincts, but don't call me on that. And it's thirty-nine thousand, fifty, uh, it talks about at fifty-six. Come on. I think you guys can do better than a two percent raise. Right? But what I want you guys to do, and I'm imploring you guys, the city, all the city council members, because in the past, I've written to every, almost every member of the city's council public, safe community. I've written to the former House Speaker, George Johnson. I've written to this present Speaker of the House and nothing has ever happened, right? Whether it's a sense of me writing to you guys and you guys aren't even responding, how I want you guys to respond, like, what are, what is the whole purpose of this, this whole democracy? Right? I want you guys to come and visit the center, right? On all tours, straight tours, on all, all tours possible, right? And you'll talk, and you'll sit there and you'll tell someone this, that's what they deserve. Because at this point, this is the main, main sense and it's all here.
Can you wrap up? Can you wrap up? Thank you.
It's twenty twenty-two and we are the lowest paid dispatchers in the tri-state area.
Thank you very much. A lot, a lot of operators make more money than us for what we do for the, the leaders.
A lot of operators make more money than us for what we do for the delivery system.
Thank you.
Close departments in the world.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And now I'd like to call on Karen Rosado, and then Dominic Francois, and then Tabitha Forte. Karen Rosado. Your turn.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Karen Rosado. I'm a paramedic who is terminated from SCLI. I've come here to say hopefully that you understand the extent of mandates caused myself and many others' lives. You see, I drove this post-up care system and had jobs on some severe. I was a kid, but I knew that I wanted more out of life. And I wanted to be in a position to help others in any capacity. Now, in the opposite city, I'm hoping for me to become a paramedic as a SCLI and TPD. I am hearing about people every day, enjoying my career and my young people who are in care systems who thought they wouldn't amount to anything or have a career like mine in SCLI, until I turned my career around. And I saw opening eyes that they now have someone to relate to. And it's true that things are hard enough, they can't make it. I now feel like that's worth a lot to give. It feels like they have their business to do. I think I get the love of the dear spirits for some skills that they have. I now feel over my next paycheck will come from them. I worked during the pandemic and while it seemed like a broken interest, the day was crazy one day for God's sake, it was heartbreaking to hear. Throughout the pandemic, we were seeing and experiencing some of the worst days of our career. Working for hours, I know, with cold bodies at a full-time range. It was mentally, emotionally draining, but we showed every day. Some days, our tired mental system and choices and charmedness were vaccines that had popped up for athletes or in theaters because they would be constantly having enough to do with that. You see, I'm not a job, playing as a paramedic for a few weeks, but I can use an actual field that's came for it. And I can experience community activism. Where's the last comment? The CDC finally has this on vaccine, but we're exposed to both standard diseases as a vaccine. So why is it that we don't have a plan? Why is it that we don't have a community? Am I a person, anyone? Or do you want to?
Thank you.
Am I a person, anyone? And I hope you will stay with us and drive through our best and allow us to show our brothers and sisters again in your faith and mission.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And now I'd like to call on Dominic Francois, followed by Tabitha Forte. Dominic Francois, you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Your turn.
Thank you very much. My name is Dominic Francois. I am still a public officer till next Friday. More than 10 years, it's hard to end due to COVID vaccine mandate. And I was forced to submit my paperwork for Bethel retirement, which was not my intention. And I'm hoping that this turns around so that I can continue my career and retire from the city of New York. And in the past, we have heard and a lot of individuals who just wanted to be heard and given the opportunity to say, this is not for me. I appreciate the offer, but I'm not going to do this. The vaccine was something that was more so people considering who have to work here or have to work in the city. And I think it's now we're in the past where we're starting to hear those voices that were not heard expressly during those reasonable accommodation repressed periods. Now we're hearing those voices say something, say, well, this is not right. This is why it's not right. This is why I feel I should be given the reasonable accommodation. With the impact to right the wrong that we've experienced for the last two and a half years or about three years, not to be for the city to say, okay, we've got to start to rebuild. We've got to start taking next steps to get past whatever COVID is and whatever it's going to be for the city in the future. But it has to start at some point. It really does have to start at some point. Some people like Sally Teaster, you know, like Peter Kennedy, Michael King. Thank you for being the case about this movement, being the driver that is why so many people just keep pushing and doing what they feel is best for their families and themselves. So they can just do a little bit more with that, which is provided. Thank you for the silence. So you, you say everyone will be well, similar to the silence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
And now, it's welcome Tabitha Forte to testify. And to anyone else who's on the Zoom who hasn't had the chance to speak, if you haven't called in, please leave the Zoom raise hand function now. Tabitha Forte. It's on.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
On October 1st, I was placed on unpaid leave from Praxis Housing Initiative due to the vaccine mandate. And I was officially fired as of Valentine's Day of this year. Since then, I have been unable to work in person in New York due to this unconstitutional mandate. I've worked on the entire pandemic and even contracted COVID from my direct supervisor. From zero to zero, I have dedicated myself working to become a mental health counselor. I completed eight years' master's program and obtained my licensure last year to be told by honey to work in person. For over 10 years, I've worked as a counselor, exposed to all sorts of communicable diseases. And I have never known I'd judge or I thought that I would be judged in America for health decisions I choose for myself. Not only do I have an extensive medical related history to, with my nervous system, I also filed for a religious exemption with a letter from my pastor and was denied. CDC guidelines have changed. CDC has amended these restrictions from being absolutely nonsense. We, the people, should never allow these tyrants, such as these circle back employees, to come up, to control us. And they think, and they need to get together to talk about dropping this mandate. I find it incredibly funny that these employers who are in charge of making those decisions have come together to discuss these new guidelines, which were completely ridiculous to begin with. They come here with no COVID data and will sit in our faces pained and state that they will get back to us, letting us know how many people were fired or put on leave because their exemptions were denied. There should be, never have been a mandate in the first place. This is a free country. Vote for these elements, save in America. Let's go Brandon.
Thank you. I think you've heard from all the Zoom registrants who are on the Zoom. I'm going to read through the remaining registrants to make sure we haven't missed anyone. So if you hear your name, call them if you're here and you want to testify, please come up. Or if you're on the Zoom, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Tyler Pala, Jason Free, Mary Moss, Audrey Dennis, Brigitte Boyo, Ruth Bishinsky, Danielle Moyer, Danny, Krista Lode, S. Julia, Patricia Libiola, Stacy Mustopoulos, William McLeary, Carrie McGovern-Dumby, Gabriel Delmau, Jeremiah Estenani, anonymous attendee, Arthur Golden, Diana Haynes, Grace Lee, Michael Rogers, Jessica Tamor, Kira Kretchen, Edgar Alfonse Nekat, Christine Schneider, Deanna Morgan, Ricardo Hengel, Noobam, I am, and Michael King.
So I want to thank particularly Councilmember Ayella, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Arula, Arulia, and of course, the amazing Carmen Villalosa for staying here the whole time. And I also want to thank Amazing, individuals who testified in person, of course, on the Zoom. I have to say, we will be constantly following up, not only on the mandate issue, but also on the issue of how is it that the city, in my opinion, is not doing more virtual? What are we doing about the pain scales? There's a long list that you heard us discuss earlier. Very, very serious about making sure New York City has the best workforce in the world. And we look forward to working with you. I want to turn it over to my fabulous colleague, Carmen Villalosa.
Well, just echoing the sentiments of Chair Brewer, thanking all of the colleagues and as well as all the people who came out today. As the civil service and labor chair, I know that our city is only as strong as our workforce. And so we will be following up and making sure that the issues that were brought to this table today are followed up with. Thank you for coming to testify. We know it can be nerve-wracking. You've been earned a reputation and we appreciate your testimony today. Thank you very much.